It doesn't like just being on the table. For some reason, the pattern on the table.
One size about 28. We exclude over here. So sixty, between sixty, seventy, that's a good number. She told me you were ready. You're ready. Awesome. We want to welcome everyone to tonight's meeting of the Cedar Rapids Community School District Board of Education. It's Monday, January 22nd, 2018. And with that, I call the meeting to order. Would somebody like to read the approval of the agenda?
I move that the agenda of Monday, January 22nd, 2018 Board of Education meeting be approved as set forth and that each item is considered ready for discussion and/or action.
Clayton, is there a second?
A second.
This is a roll call vote.
Director Yan Hall?
Aye.
Director Jansen?
Aye.
Director Chukobo?
Aye.
Director Meisterling?
Aye.
Director Bortchrding?
Aye.
Director Humble?
Aye.
President Laberty?
Aye.
With that, we'll move into three different public hearings. The first public hearing is for the 2018-19 school year calendar. This is an information item. And so, Mary Ellen, I'll turn it over. Turn it over to you. Do you have any comments at this time?
Sure. One of the things that I mentioned at the last public hearing for the calendar is that it very much mirrored the 2017-18 calendar. And that is the truth. And because of that, I actually, when we were working as the committee that worked on the calendar, did not realize that Martin Luther King Day is the third Monday in January, always. And one of the things that you can't do is mirror the calendar when it is the week before because next year, January starts on a Tuesday. So therefore, what we did was we changed the 15th of January and we will have that 21st of January will actually be the day that we have staff progress reporting and no school for students. So that is one change. And so while it mirrored, and that was a good thing, I attended the CREA and CRODA Representatives Meeting last week and one of the teachers caught that. So I was really happy that they brought that up. So that is one change.
All right. Is there anybody that would like to address the board at this time during this public hearing related to the 2018-19 school year calendar? If so, you can approach the podium. Just state your name, your address, and if you're representing any organization, Laurel Day will note your time. Thank you.
Hi, Tanya Johnson, Cedar Rapids Education Association, 3816 Riverside Drive, Northeast. I wasn't really going to say anything, but then I thought, since we've had a few questions that have come up, I just wanted to let the board know that there were several, in our conversation with Mary Ellen, there were several ideas and things that popped up as concerns and as issues. However, we understand that the way the calendar is set up where we have to start on the 23rd because of the governor's law and some other issues with the end of the school year, that is going to be really difficult to make any changes and still get the number of student contact days we need. So we are, just want to let everyone know, we're always working together with the administration and the district to try to make this a good thing for students and for staff. And with those issues, start date and end date, it makes it really hard this year to do maybe what's the best for all of us, but we will continue to have conversations with that. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you, Tanya. Anyone else that would like to address the board during this public hearing?
Bernard Clayton, 1604 Sixth Avenue Southeast. On January, during the Martin Luther King Birthday, that would have been a perfect opportunity since there'd be no school on the 21st. That would have been a perfect opportunity for the school district to honor Dr. Martin Luther King. And I hope in the future calendars that y'all will consider having that as a day off in honor of Dr. Martin Luther King. Thank you.
We are proposing that it's off, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. I just want to clarify that. Would anybody else like to address the board during this public hearing? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the first public hearing. The second public hearing is related to the sale of property and temporary grading easement at Hoover Elementary School. And John Galbraith, is there anything that you would like to address with us? I think we've all seen the materials on that. All right. Is there anybody from the public that would like to address the board regarding the sale of the piece of property and temporary grading easement at Hoover Elementary School? If so, please come forward and address the board. Hi, just again, state your name and address and if you're representing any organization.
Hi, my name is Kelly McMahon. I live at 5508 Dostal Drive Southwest, Cedar Rapids, Iowa, 52404. I am speaking as an individual, but I happen to be a staff member at Hoover Elementary School. And we were very surprised when KCRG had posted on their news story on Facebook that the school had told them that we felt that this would be safer for our students because as a staff, the overwhelming majority of us have not heard how the plan is going to work, how the roundabout is going to ensure that our students are walking across safely. As someone who would be driving through it every day, I am terrified of roundabouts because I'm like, oh my gosh, where am I supposed to go? We're not happy with this idea of a roundabout being put right there at the corner of Johnson and Wiley because of the huge, steep hill that's on one side of Johnson coming up to Wiley. So as someone who speaks frequently to their colleagues, yeah, we would like to see this maybe be held off until the city can give our parents more information, knowing how they're going to help our parents, especially those are new to the country, driving, to know how to use a roundabout, to make sure that our kids are being safely able to walk home or go walk to the park at the end of the year for our end of the year field trip. We're very, we are not in favor of this.
Great. Would anybody else like to address the board at this time? And John, I do want to clarify, was it the Cedar Rapids School District that approached this idea or was it the city that approached the school district with this concept? And yeah, go ahead and use the mic.
The city approached the school district with this concept and asked to purchase the land and for the grading and easement to make the improvements around Hoover. And that, that project isn't just around Hoover. I believe it extends all the way up past Jaclyn Drive as well, and there'll be a roundabout at that intersection as well.
Okay. And are there conversations ongoing with the city about this issue?
Yes, there is.
Okay. Great. Would anybody else like to address the board at this time? All right. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the second public hearing. The third public hearing is related to Jefferson High School and the ADA Compliance Project. And again, John, is there anything that you or Steve or Dr. Buck would like to address about that project? No. Is there anybody from the public that would like to address the board at this time during this public hearing related to the Jefferson High School ADA Compliance Project? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close that third public hearing. And with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Buck for the superintendent's report.
Great. Thanks, President Laberty. Just a few items for tonight, some good news. Washington Warriors held a first-of-its-kind Warrior Expo on January 8th. The inaugural expo was designed to better equate families, both current and prospective, with the choices Washington has to offer for project-based learning in art, science and language arts, college credit classes, Kirkwood Academy's home building and more. So it was a wonderful opportunity for families to engage with staff and explore Washington's many offerings. Grant Bortchrdin Jr. at Kennedy High School in Cedar Rapids has been chosen as the winner of the 2018 Corridor Jazz Project CD cover design. So Grant will receive a $100 cash prize from KC CKFM, and his design will adorn the cover of the Corridor Jazz Project XI, a compilation of recordings from the top jazz bands from Jefferson, Kennedy and Washington High Schools, as well as others from our surrounding communities. Grant's original piece and those receiving honorable mention will all be exhibited during the Corridor Jazz Project Concert, March 6th, at the University of Iowa Boxman Hall of Music. Seven-year-old Annabelle Spangler spearheaded a drive to keep the homeless warm this winter. Her group, Kid Powered Kindness, is currently working with the Iowa Ethel Library to accept donations of new and gently-used blankets through February 2nd. Kid Powered Kindness also makes little free pantries for neighborhoods throughout Cedar Rapids. Annabelle is a second grader at Viola Gibson and is certainly making a difference in our community. This Thursday, Metro High School will be partnering with Kids Against Hunger and Metro North Rotary to package thousands of meals for those in need. Some of the meals will stay in our local community and others will be shipped to other countries. Metro anticipates more than 150 volunteers will join them in this effort through the end of the day on Thursday. And we finish this report with an especially exciting announcement. Cassidy Rankin with Johnson Steam Academy was recently presented with the Iowa STEM Teacher Award at a surprise ceremony at Johnson. She will also be recognized at a special ceremony on February 14th as part of Iowa STEM Day. The ceremony will be held in the Rotunda of the State Capitol. This award recognizes Cassidy's exceptional dedication toward increasing student interest and achievement in STEM fields and careers in innovative and outstanding ways. So congratulations to Cassidy. So just a few highlights of the great things happening in Cedar Rapids schools.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Buck. Are there any board reports tonight? Jennifer?
Yeah, I was able to attend the Metro graduation and that was just a really special thing to be a part of. Noreen was there, as was Raphael and Gary, and it was just amazing to hear the stories of the kids' accomplishments. It was really great to be part of that.
Thank you. Other board reports? Gary?
Just a very quick update on legislation. We met with local legislators on Friday. You, John, and Dr. Buck were both there and some of our local legislators. It sounds at this time, things are moving rather slow at the Capitol as they work through funding issues that were kind of a carryover from last year with some Diaprope and so on. But did hear some positive things. Ashley Henson, one of our local representatives, is spearheading in the House the SAVE bill. And we heard that some good positive comments. Think we all need to stay aware of that and I'll pass any information on. I think the only concern is if they were to do some amendments, it might siphon off or how they would change that bill. So there are some discussions. I think currently mainly about, some concern about funding for athletic facilities rather than strictly educational. So we'll stay tuned to that. We heard, you know, the governor has put out, she's put out her, what the law of growth, what her target is. We'll see what happens as that moves forward. And I believe we'll have that in the first 30 days if they can figure out the funding problem that they're dealing with right now. So I'll be going to Des Moines, I believe it's the 30th, for a day on the Hill with the Iowa School Board Association. And so we'll meet with local legislators beforehand. So that's it.
Thank you, Gary. We appreciate those comments and all your work on those legislative fronts which are so important right now. Any other board reports? All right. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move into communications, delegations and petitions. This is a time for those in the audience to address the board. This is a meeting of the board in the public. It is not intended to be a dialogue under Iowa law with the public at this time. Under the rules of the Board of Education in Cedar Rapids Community School District, we allow up to five minutes per presenter to the board. When you come, please come up to the microphone and make sure you're speaking right into the microphone. Give us your full name, your address, and if you're representing any organization in particular. Laurel Day, our board secretary, will help time the five minutes so you'll see on the monitor in front of the podium when your five minutes is up. And again, we encourage folks to be respectful and civil in their comments to us. We appreciate that very much and look forward to hearing from all of you. So with that said, we'll go ahead and start with Bernard Clayton.
Good evening. I'm Bernard Clayton, 1604 Sixth Avenue Southeast. And thank you, directors and superintendent. As I say, the director, the superintendent's the head teacher and the directors are the parents designate. Yep, but y'all standing for the parents. This whole debate on restructuring the school district in terms of its buildings is an important one, but I'm thinking the most important thing we need to be concerned about is the instruction of our students. That's what we need to be concerned about. With the 1% and a half that the governor's allowing this year, that's a force. And that's the main issue, and I'm going to say this, I believe that education should become a right and should become a right in law, that resources are spent on every kid. We have kids in this community that need money spent on them, some more than others. And when you use the word disparage these, that means someone else is getting more than someone else. And I encourage everyone to read the book entitled White Rage by Carol Armstrong. And if you don't read the whole book, just read one chapter in it, "Burning Brown to the Ground." Now, I'm 63 years old and I was born the year that Brown versus the Boy Education went through the court of rule. During that particular time, in 63 years, every trick in the book has been used to avoid having black folks show up in school with white kids. And read the book. And I'm going to say another issue that was brought up, the presence of black people at meetings. There could be a lot of reasons and they run the gamut. I'm not going to get into it because time does not allow. But one school board member should not be singled out to round up and bring all the black folks to the meeting. Each one of y'all, and there's no black enclaves in this city, so each one of y'all have black constituents. Each one of y'all. So, and something else I noticed, and I was on the theory of Task Force Committee, I noticed no black school employees participated on that committee. I noticed during the last meeting, no black school employees showed up to any of the meetings. When they do show up to meetings, because they're supposed to be there and they're getting paid to be there. So you need to question why even your black school employees do not show up at your meeting. It could be simply, it could be simply, and I'm talking about black folks, it could be simply they don't care or too, our voice is not going to be heard. Because one of the things that we as black people do and real smart ones of us, we never tell you what we really think, so that way you can't injure us later up the road. That's the reality of being a black person, is you keep your thoughts to yourself. And again, I'm going to remind you of my uncle Horace Adams, who got killed trying to get the kind of job, trying to get the position that y'all have. He was only one vote he got killed for. So when you make this decision, yes, the school district has to downsize. That part of it I agree with. But the one part that I'm really concerned about is that you need to up the structure and maybe if you up instruction, that will keep people in the district. Buildings are not going to keep folks in the district. And again, I'm going to sit down, read White Rage by Carol Armstrong and read the one chapter, "Burning Brown to the Ground." And again, school board, may your faith be stronger than your fears. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Clayton. We appreciate those comments. Next, Kathy McCright. Hi Kathy, welcome.
Well, thank you. John, or Mr. Laberty?
You can call me John, we know each other.
Okay. Members of the board, Dr. Buck, thank you for the opportunity to address you on an issue that I'm passionate about. My name is Kathy McCright and I live at 1936 Fourth Avenue Southeast. I have two sons from Cambodia, both of whom attended and loved Johnson when it was, when it was School of the Arts. My oldest, Tim, graduated from Wash and is at you and I. And my youngest, CJ, is currently a senior at Washington and will be attending you and I as well. I have been president and treasurer of the Johnson PTA. I have been Johnson Volunteer of the Year. I, along with Dale Todd, Bill Quinby, Dan and Tina Allison, and Lori Lane, worked very hard to raise over $100,000 to improve the playground. In other words, my credentials and love for Johnson should not be questioned. I am concerned that one of the proposals includes building a larger school at the current site of Johnson. For those of you unfamiliar with Johnson, it currently is located on one square city block with absolutely no green space and is woefully inadequate as an outdoor facility, unlike every other elementary school in the district that I'm familiar with. It has no walking trail and no soccer or football field, nor any space to even contemplate that you could have one. It would seem to me that it would make more sense to close Johnson and build a larger facility at the Grant Wood location rather than to further diminish the playground at the current location. It is not fair to those kids. In my opinion, the students at Johnson are getting the short end of the proverbial stick in the proposal. Our students deserve to be in a similar building with comparable outdoor space. If it's a matter of attendance, and I understand that is a problem, then you need to schedule some meetings in cities and with schools that have similar problems and have solved it. You shouldn't just build the playground or build the school on the current site. It is just, it's not right.
Thank you, Kathy. We appreciate your comments. Next, we have Michelle Mersbrock. Michelle? Hello, welcome.
Hello. My name is Michelle Mersbrock. I live at 2229 Meadowbrook Drive Southeast. I'm speaking today to the facilities master plan to close eight elementary schools here in Cedar Rapids. I share many of the concerns as many attendees here today. However, I also agree that facilities need to be updated. I'm concerned with the mismanagement of funds within our district, allowing for schools to deteriorate to the point that this is a reality. I am disappointed in how this plan came to fruition. I am dismayed that residents' attempts to ask questions and receive adequate answers have been ignored or glossed over, and I am frustrated that the school board members we elected are not considering our voice in this decision. Pebble and SAVE funds are made available to you because we, the residents, have invested in Cedar Rapids and enrolled our children in the district. Although the loophole here allows you to vote without consent of the general public, it would be rash to make that vote without consideration for the people who will be voting not only in the next board election, but for the inevitable bonds in our future. No one is against giving our kids the best and everyone believes in the future-ready mission. But the fact is, there are alternate plans, such as one proposed by the committee itself, that would only close three elementary schools rather than eight. But we must be careful not to do this at the expense of our children, our established communities, and ultimately, the morale of Cedar Rapids and whether or not we trust our elected officials. There are ways to give our kids updated facilities without destroying the unique fabric of our inner city. I request the board take more time to consider this plan and dissect the information presented by the committee, and to also take time to start a real conversation with members of the community. I think you'd be surprised at how willing people are to get involved when they know they will be heard, and how willing people are to compromise when given the chance. I've spent my free time in the last week walking around neighborhoods, asking residents what they think about the plan. In this short amount of time, I alone got over 100 signatures asking the board to delay the vote. And resoundingly, the reasons were the same. We moved here because the school is so close. We love the small, close-knit community for our children and family. I am concerned about longer transportation times and increased traffic. I am worried about young families moving away. Or I didn't realize this vote was coming up so soon and I didn't realize we had a voice. Given these responses, I think everyone here should place close attention to not only what happens here today, but also every future meeting, decision and election that follows. We need to be diligent in taking care of our schools and neighborhoods with the realization that someone else may not be there to do it for us. We should also consider just who is benefiting from this plan. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate your comments. Next, we have Brooklyn McMurren.
My name's Summer McMurren. She, I'll be up here with her, at least while she speaks.
So are there two of you speaking?
Yes. And it's not going to take five minutes for both of us, but we will let her start it out.
Okay.
See, I'm not here.
Okay. All right. Got it. And you're Summer McMurren?
Yep.
Okay. Great. Hi, welcome. Good to see you.
My name is Brooklyn McMurren and I go to Kenwood at Leadership Academy. And...
What do you want to tell the board members?
I want to go and I wear my bicycle.
Do you want to lose that?
No, I want to stay in Kenwood. Wait about.
Thank you, Brooklyn. I am Summer McMurren. I am her mother. And we did have a discussion at Kenwood with some of our answers being answered and some of the questions kind of being squirtered around. But I also went over in the communities and spoke to people, got signatures, called businesses, and they don't know anything about the plan. So you guys kind of pushed the plan through quickly and trying to vote today and get all this done, and the community is not receptive to it. There's a lot of loopholes in it. And with Kenwood, how do you look at a heat map when most of our parents and families choose to go to Kenwood? They drive their kids there for the Leadership Academy and for the academics that they are getting. And heat maps can change. I know that if this plan does go through and the eight schools are closed, we will move out of the district to be closer to our jobs. We all have a choice on where we send our kids, and I know that that will be reflected if it does come to a bond and other things. I also would like a memorandum of understanding with the city. We need to get the city involved. We need to get more community input out there. It's, what's the rush to vote today? What is the big thing? Funds aren't even available. The instruction is very important. Yeah, the buildings do need to be replaced, some of them, but the Kenwood one now includes funds that were spent over the summer with like tuck pointing and new lockers. That's not what it's going to take to get Kenwood up to the standards that it needs. So then, we're now at a lower, we're down in a different tier because you added those funds in there. That's not fair. The instruction is very important for our kids, so I would invest more money into education and possibly consider not closing eight buildings or just taking your time. Slow down, get community input. Kids have a voice too. My son wanted to come tonight and speak, but he has a dance class, so he couldn't. But there's a lot of students that go to school and ask their teachers every day, is my school closing? Are we going to have somewhere to go? Because they hear that, oh, on the news, they're closing eight schools, Kenwood's one of them. And there's just several families that can't make it out here. There were several families that couldn't make it to our Kenwood meeting. They work. They work two jobs. They, this timeframe, there's no buses at all. Please just take your time when voting, take everything into consideration and wait to vote.
Thank you. We appreciate your comments, both of your comments. Next, we have Janel Lund. Hi, welcome.
Hi. I'm Janel Lund. I live at 520 Lime Rock Drive Northwest. And after hearing the school board's plan about closing eight schools, me and my husband have become very involved. I want the public to know that I'm not against updating schools, building new schools, remodeling new schools. I want the public to know that I just want them to be informed and for them to have a voice. I want them to have their own opinion on this plan. I want to pin this, I want the public to know that this master plan doesn't cover all the costs to keep up all the current district's buildings. It only focuses on elementary schools. The plan leaves out the costs of repairs and updates for high schools, middle schools and current district buildings. For example, the district needs to keep up Polk and also this building. The following numbers we found from a committee meeting. Middle schools will need roughly $7.5 billion. High schools will need $81 million. And other district needs is about $24.7 million for a grand total of $177 million. How does the school board plan to pay for all this? All the saved money will be going strictly to pay for these new schools and only the elementary schools. To get the 700... To get the $700 million, a bond will have to be passed by our community. If we do not pass this bond, then what will happen to the high schools and the middle schools? Will they just go into despair like the elementary schools currently are and just fall apart? The school district has gotten between $13 and $60 million from save per year for the last 10 years. What have they spent that money on? They spent a combined total of about $93 million on the high schools and the middle schools. The rest has been spent on paying off bonds and this building. There should be no reason why we have schools with leaky roofs, heating and cooling problems. There has been plenty of money to fix those and other problems that have arisen. As a whole, it is hard to trust our leaders when there has been such wasteful spending and lack of public outreach. To me, if I was on the school board, and I want the public to be informed and to come up with a plan that the community can support, because in the end, you're going to have to come back and ask for a bond. Without the community's support, it won't happen. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate your comments. Hello, welcome.
Hi, thank you. Hi, I'm Jane Harney, and I live at 552 Forest Drive Southeast. When we consider the strategies that help children become confident, successful adults, one strategy on which many experts agree is the importance of finding opportunities to celebrate the things kids are doing right. Each child has a set of strengths that makes them unique, and when we identify and celebrate those unique strengths, we ensure that child's path to success. Missing those opportunities can sentence a child to a life without a clear sense of identity and the confidence needed to be successful. At this point in time, I would argue that the Cedar Rapids School District is facing a similar challenge. The district has not dedicated adequate time or resources for identifying and celebrating its strengths. If you do not have a clear understanding of what you're doing right, and you're not confident in those qualities that make the district unique, you too are suffering from a lack of identity. And this lack of identity will sentence the district and the children it serves to a similar fate. You'll find yourselves without a clear and solid path towards success. Cedar Rapids is an urban, not a suburban, school district. Our diversity, our smaller, connected, walkable neighborhood elementary schools, these are our strengths. We should be celebrating these strengths and finding opportunities to sustain them, not abandoning the uniqueness of who we are as a district and a city. Big box schools are not our identity. This approach resembles the identity of a Linmar or a college community district. The minute the Cedar Rapids School District embraces the transformation of our schools solely for the purpose of emulating those of suburban districts is the moment the entire city of Cedar Rapids risks losing its identity as a vibrant, urban community that values the uniqueness of its core neighborhoods, its residents, and our schoolchildren. Smaller neighborhood schools allow more flexibility for families. When kids can walk or bike to school, or parents can quickly drop their children off at a school a few blocks away, families are offered critical flexibility as they navigate their busy day. If neighborhood schools are closed and children are faced with the challenge of long bus rides, it will have a negative impact on the quality of life for families. Once schools are situated further away, before and after-school activities can quickly become impossible for families to accommodate, and children end up missing out on valuable opportunities to become more engaged and connected with their school. Steve Graham has said the cost of renovating the existing neighborhood elementary buildings will cost approximately the same amount as the proposed plan to close those eight schools and build new. His quote was, "We're going to be spending pretty much the same amount of money whether we do something or we do nothing." I would argue that reinvesting in our neighborhood schools is not doing nothing. If what Steve says is true regarding the cost comparison, why not invest that money in the preservation of our neighborhood schools? This approach will not only allow the district to continue serving those neighborhood school children, but also benefit all Cedar Rapids residents by investing in the future vitality of those neighborhoods. I'm asking you to delay this vote until such time that enough input from community members and city leaders has been gathered and discussed to ensure all options have been explored and the right decision can be made. Please consider the unique strengths of our district and our city, as well as the quality of life for families. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. We appreciate your comments. Next, we have Ryland Nading. Hello, welcome.
Thank you. My name's Ryland Nading. I live at 4716 Green Valley Drive Southeast. I no longer have a child in the elementary school. He's a senior this year at Wash. And I just recently got involved in this as soon as I heard that it was something that was, they were closing elementary schools, and the vote was coming up very quickly. I just thought, well, why not wait? You can wait 90 days, get some more input. As you can see, all of the people there speaking have done a lot of things to get input from different neighborhoods. I went out myself to Jim's Food, St. Vincent de Paul. We gathered signatures, talked to people. Everybody we talked to was willing to say, let's stop and take a look at this. That's really all I have to say.
Great, thank you. We appreciate your input.
Thank you.
Next, we have Mr. Todd Lund.
Hi. Todd Lund from 520 Lime Rock Drive Northwest. Thanks for the chance to speak. I had this whole presentation written out, and then I thought we were going to have another working session. Apparently, we're just going to vote tonight. So, most of this isn't really relevant anymore, but one thing I want to say is, I've talked a lot to Dr. Buck, but he really doesn't have a vote. We voted for the board here. I think we need a lot more time to talk to you and hear your opinions. Dr. Buck told me he hopes things will happen. He doesn't actually have a say in what happens, but the board has a say. So, why don't we go around and, my suggestion, I think last meeting, they said, how much is enough communication? Maybe you could go to each elementary school and promote that you're going to be there, talk to the community at each school, see what they think about the plan, and actually promote it. Don't just leave it to the newspaper. A lot of people don't get the newspaper. And maybe try that, see what the community thinks, not just the PTA either. A lot of these PTAs won't let outside people come in and actually be part of the meetings. So you're basically leaving it up to the parents, and I don't think that's fair because it's a community thing. And let me just go over some things I thought maybe we could talk about at the working session. So, I think the committee came up with a number of 7,800, what they expected, they needed for the capacity, but then they decided to go to 7,650. What does the board think is the right number? Shouldn't these be things that are discussed and open? See what you think? And we're supposed to have 21st century buildings? That was part of this plan? There's three schools that aren't going to have that. Do you think that's fair to the three that won't have these new buildings? I didn't hear anything in the last working session about that. So, things like that, I think, need to get discussed in an actual work session to see what you think, not what Dr. Buck thinks. Because I believe Dr. Buck wants to do what's right, but all he can say is, I hope it happens. You have the power to make things happen. I think we should hear from you, and the whole community should hear from you, in open sessions. Let it be covered by the media. Let's hear what you think. And I think if you're going to vote today, you should know enough about the plan. I shouldn't have to hear you saying, well, Dr. Buck thinks this, Steve Graham says this. You should know the numbers. All that should be right at the tip of your tongue, and you should be able to repeat what you think and what's good for the community. And another thing, now that I saw what you're voting on, it's going to be Coolidge and Jackson and Truman. My daughter goes to Coolidge. I've got lots of concerns. It's not just about getting a new school. It's about keeping the class sizes small. I've talked a lot about this to Dr. Buck and President Lavery, and they say, well, don't worry, it'll work out. I look at the numbers, and I don't see how it'll work out that you can keep the benchmarks that we currently have. So part of this plan was to equalize all the class sizes, and I think this plan will do that. The problem is, they're all going to be at 25 students. Kindergarten through second grade will be at 25 students. I think for that grade, you need a lot less students per teacher. My one daughter's in first grade with 27 students, and the teacher has a lot of trouble trying to control the students because there's too many. First grade shouldn't have 27 kids. I don't think this plan really will address that. It probably will make it worse for a lot of schools. It might make Coolidge a little better, but you either got to make sure the benchmarks work before you vote on this, or don't vote. Just make sure we're doing the right things. I think everyone in my area wants a new school, but is it going to be good for the students? Or are you trying to pack too many kids into even a 600 school? I think that's, those are all things that should be discussed between you, maybe in a work session, so I can hear what you think, not what Dr. Buck thinks. I think that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lund. Next, Keith Hammer.
Good evening once again.
Hello.
My name is Keith Hammer, and I live on Forest Drive on the southeast side of town. I'm pretty sure most of you know my position on this topic. I want our kids to have the best learning environments possible, but also take into account the intrinsic value that an urban neighborhood setting plays in that education. It's pretty much that simple. And I know the board leadership is looking for new input, new things, right? So I'm just going to highlight a few items, totally random, that I think the board needs to consider if a vote is taken this evening. The first item is simple: Stop selling. Okay? If the plan is good, it'll sell itself if you've truly educated the public. I heard multiple times this weekend while I was out petitioning that the school district should be selling to you, and the public expects you to take an impartial position, look at facts, untangle the data to get to the truth, and gather other inputs from the citizens to help make a decision. The belief is, you've sold it for so long, you've stopped objectively questioning and are now just trying to justify. This is what I heard out. Okay? For example, the board has been presented with academic evidence that public safety is an issue when a neighborhood is left without a school and should not be ignored, and yet we continue to hear the fallacy of there's crime in all neighborhoods and no correlation. That demonstrates perfectly my point. My next item is millennials. Back in December, as the lead RSP consultant stood in front of you and stated how much he loves to make fun of millennials, it made me think. Do they and you really understand who you're building this plan for? Hopefully, you did some type of market research. I'm sure that you learned about millennials and that they tend to care more about experiences than possessions. They tend to be more involved in their children's lives and in their neighborhoods. You can translate that to they care less about the building and more about goes on inside of it. They care more about their community interactions with their neighbors than they do about large new schools. The next item is that I believe the board may be underestimating the immediate impact of this incomplete proposal on the city and its neighborhoods. If you decide to vote, even though it's just a quote framework, tomorrow, when the Realtor takes a prospective buyer out to say a house in the Truman neighborhood, they would be ethically and morally obligated to inform the potential buyer that the neighborhood school that they are so excited to send their children to will not be there in a few short years when their kids begin to go to school. Instead, they'll be going to a yet-to-be-specified school, and per the responses from the district, open enrollment won't be allowed. The only way to change schools is to move out of the district as your committee representative requested last week. Would you, as a parent, purchase that home? I highly doubt it. You would either explore the neighborhood where the new 600-student school is, or look outside the district altogether, since you are no longer looking at competing with small neighborhood schools, but rather large suburban-style schools found at college, community, and Linmar. Next topic, Superintendent Buck recently touted the 75% of the 600 members in the teacher unions. Give me a little grace on that number. I think that's right. Voted in favor of this plan, but so that made me think, 25% voted against it. Why did 25% vote no? Does this mean 25% of teachers are against great new 21st century learning facilities and all that has been touted with this plan? I doubt that. Do they have a broader vision of what is going on here, potentially? It seems like this vote should have been 100% in favor. Anecdotally, to this topic of teacher support, while gathering petition signatures, we spoke with 12 current teachers in the Cedar Rapids Community School Districts. Unfortunately, not a single one would sign the petition. But also, not a single one supported the plan. Not a single one. Three people applying for jobs within the district also didn't sign and were also against the plan. Why did none sign? We don't have to guess. They told us. They were concerned about retribution by district leadership. Therefore, I suggest you reexamine your hypothesis that Cedar Rapids Community School District staff, including those on the committee, feel no fear of retribution in discussing their views. And again, that was 12 out of 12 teachers that we talked to that were against this plan. Now, extend that for a minute. As we see through the various school board meetings, since the plan was formally unveiled, the plan had very good support from teachers, school administrators, and committee members. People who either participated in the creation of the plan or had a very strong benefit in seeing it pass. We've been, very few public members actually step up to this podium with no ties to the process or the people in it and show their support. I would think that would bother you. So, the last thing, comment is simply this. This is your plan, and you own this decision. Your names will be on this for 100 years. We're reshaping this community. So take a break. Rethink how you engage the community. Think different. Go set up a table at Jim's Groceries. I know they will let you. Approach and talk to people as they come in. You might learn a lot about your customers and their needs. Set up a table at Newbo. Display your plans, excuse me, plans. Petition those people for their ideas, thoughts, and concerns. Go greet customers at the Starlight or the Quarter Barrel. Go hang out at Wilson Avenue High V. Walk a few neighborhoods where you plan to close schools.
Excuse me, Mr. Hammer. Your time is up. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hammer. We appreciate your comments as always. Next, Kelly Bult, B-U-L-T. Apologies if I've mispronounced that. Hi, welcome.
Good evening. My name is Kelly Bult, and I live at 440 Memorial Drive Southeast. I was born in Cedar Rapids almost 40 years ago and raised in a nearby small town. For the past nine years, I have lived in Cedar Rapids, and I have two children, a sixth-grade son at McKinley and a third-grade daughter at Grant Wood. I am also actively involved in the Grant Wood PTA and for the past three years have served as a board member. Since the beginning of the master facilities planning process, starting with the surveys to the meetings about plan options, to the presentation of the chosen plan in November, I have been involved at some level with each opportunity presented to learn and ask questions. I want to thank the committee for all their work and recognize the task at hand was not an easy task that included hard neighborhood and financial decisions. I also want to thank Dr. Buck specifically for January 4th small group discussion he offered to Grant Wood PTA. I do not think it changed opinions of many who attended, but it definitely built trust, and several who attended the meeting spoke passionately to Dr. Buck about appreciation towards the style of the meeting. As someone who has attended several meeting formats, I feel the best meeting format was the Grant Wood PTA meeting. It allowed for small group discussion-style meeting and was not limited by time. It actually ended up being three and a half hours long. It felt less intimidating and the larger group moderator-style meetings than consulting-style meetings. Because of this, I'm in favor of delaying the vote to allow for more schools and neighborhoods, including residents with no ties to the district, to have the same opportunity for small group discussion-style meetings. I have heard arguments against offering more meetings, such as, we have already offered several meetings, and we have already delayed the vote four months. I have also heard the Grant Wood area referred to as allowed minority, and the Save CR neighborhood group as only Grant Wood area people, who have a fundamental disagreement about Grant Wood closing. As someone who's been involved with that group and attended the meeting at Grant Wood, I can tell you that is absolutely not true. I was grateful to learn at the Grant Wood meeting that the plan intends to continue community involvement as each neighborhood faces closure or rebuilding with a sort of school neighborhood rebranding. I think this is awesome. However, I feel this needs formal commitment written- However, I feel this needs formal commitment written in the plan. It was said that this would happen in the planning stages, should the plan get voted in, and the current stage was referred to as the framework stage. This did provide clarity, but it is not written in the plan this way, and building trust with community and neighborhoods needs to happen in both stages. A plan this large affecting multiple generations of people should feel redundant in communication. The district is around 50% free and reduced meals. That is really high and speaks volumes to the many obstacles many families face and why the input to the plan over the last two months may be lower. Also, the plan to be possibly voted on tonight was announced to the public during the busiest time of year, with Thanksgiving, Christmas, New Year's, and of course, winter weather. I was also grateful to learn at the Grantwood meeting that the plan includes on the facilitator line an additional staff, such as an assistant principal or second counselor. But I have thought about that word "or" a lot since the Grantwood meeting. While it may be true that new facilities are more able to provide modern structural amenities than older buildings do not provide, it is also true that families are very aware of the level of behaviors many Cedar Rapids schools are dealing with, and I personally feel like that is more of the driving force behind open enrollment than if the building lacks amenities. Due to this, I strongly feel the plan needs to include both an assistant principal and a second counselor. This additional staff should be written in as a guarantee. As a mother of a 12-year-old child with ADHD, I have studied behaviors a lot over the last decade. I have served as a parent member on the district wellness committee, and I am hopeful to see continued efforts of behavioral correlation to activity level, mind and body awareness, and nutrition. The district has a great opportunity to show the state and maybe even the country how a district of this size facing socioeconomic challenges can reimagine the district with mindfulness for every important aspect accounted for. I truly appreciate the district theme of "the power of we." Please think of this when deciding to hold off the vote tonight. Ask yourself if delaying the vote with additional time for in-the-neighborhood community discussions would follow the power of "we." If so, please delay the vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. We appreciate your comments. Next, Mr. Don Carr. Mr. Carr? Hello, welcome.
Good evening, and thank you for your service to the community. As some of you know, I'm a retired city councilman. I've given back to this community for years. My granddaughter just graduated from Roosevelt, fourth generation. So my family's been here since the 1850s, all right? Now, I got the survey in the mail, and as I went through it, being a city councilman, I've hired consultants. And I started laughing at the survey because it was also, as I went through it and answered it, it kept taking me to the same place. It was really rigged, and I was laughing about it, same kind we use in city government to get people to favor what we wanted to pass. Then I asked myself, "I wonder how much they're paying these consultants who use the same method in scheduling and system all over the country? It doesn't affect..." I mean, this is Cedar Rapids, Iowa. They don't live here. They don't know what really goes on here. They're consultants. They're overpaid. They don't even know anything. We had that problem all the time in government. I fought them all the time. So I started looking at it, and then I started looking at what you brought forward. I laughed at some of the problems. I'm worried about the safety of the busing. Nothing's been brought up about that yet, the cost of busing. We gotta worry about that. Why haven't you brought that forward to the public? Why haven't you brought this forward to the public to vote on? Why haven't you? Another thing I laughed at is a good example of how flawed it is, Harrison and Madison. We put a rec center, Mary, in the Harrison School District. It took up their green space, so the kids didn't have a place to play. And now, we're going to tear Harrison down and build a bigger school there that even have less green space. And then you're going to close Madison that has two or three soccer fields, couple baseball fields, that has plenty of room to grow and add on to. That doesn't make any sense at all. And then I kept looking at the whole deal there. We're going to take the green space away from the kids. I guess you want them to sit in a classroom and stay on the computer and not get any exercise or get any green space in them and get them some freedom. And I kept looking at all this, and then I looked at the construction. I thought, "Why would we build new?" I'm a contractor. I've built new and remodeled old. And I've worked in these older school buildings and some of the newer ones. And I started laughing because new construction is cheaper than old construction. Not the same quality of concrete or quality of anything. It's all about the cost. It's all about the profit. So why, those old schools got good bones. Let's remodel them. And then I thought, "Wait a minute. What do these old schools have?" They have 10 by 20 classrooms. They have a cafeteria. They have a gym, a bathrooms, administration offices. Why would we build a new building to put new 10 by 20 classrooms in it with windows, a door, chalkboards, and desks when we already have that? I mean, how could you beat up concrete on the floor? How can you hurt the ceiling? How can you hurt that we can replace the windows? So why are we wasting all this money on new schools? And I kept thinking about this. Why don't we spend the money on education? You guys are failing teaching our kids. I graduated from Jefferson in 1964, started five corporations in this town, employed hundreds of people with a high school education I got in this town that was far better than my kids and my grandkids are getting in this town right now. So I'm challenging you to start thinking about the education of the children in this town, because this is not about a big, huge school building with better administration offices for the administration and you guys to have nice places to hang out. This is about the kids. I want to know why you aren't doing your job in educating these kids better and improving the system for these kids and giving them a better education in this community than I got in the 1960s. We ran this, when I went to school, we had a principal, associate principal, a counselor, and a couple secretaries. How many people you got running these schools now? How many people you got in this building? I'm just laughing at this. Your overhead on your education costs are in your overhead, not in the education of the children. It's time you start thinking of what your purpose is, the education of our children in this great community, period. That's what you've got to think about. When I was on the Cedar Rapids Council, it was about this community. You're getting politics now. You're starting to sound like the city council where there was no common sense in politics. You're starting to sound like politics, no common sense. It's the kids we've got to worry about. And new buildings and 10 by 20 rooms in an old building or new building are the same. Same 10 by 20 classroom. How's that educate the kids? How's that make them any smarter? How does that make the kids be able to come out into the community and provide like what I did? You need to step up and start thinking about the kids. And that busing thing, we've got buses going all over this town without seat belts. I've got a motorhome I got seat belts in and bench seats for my grandkids. Put seat belts on those buses. How about getting some, start thinking about the safety of the children in this community that you're busing there? How about thinking about the education to them?
Excuse me, Mr. Carr, your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carr. Next, we have Mr. Chris Kronbaugh. Mr. Kronbaugh?
Evening, everyone.
Hello.
My name is Chris Kronbaugh. My wife and I live at 427 26th Street Southeast. I've been active in this process since I learned of the plan. I've come before you a couple of times before, and have tried to get the word out to as many people as I know. People are still surprised, and there's a lot of confusion around the plan. And I have to say, when at the last board meeting, a board member asked about how the board might reach out to more members of the community, and no one seemed to have any answers, I felt pretty dismayed. No one suggested churches or mobile home park community centers. No one knew a way to reach out beyond their own conventional circles, or if people knew, they weren't willing to go there. There seems to be some disconnect based on socioeconomic class in the local control here. I hope that continues to improve moving forward, no matter the outcome. I know intercultural understanding is one of the key components of the larger design here, and I applaud that. I would like to commend the leadership for a well-constructed campaign. Though I find some significant flaws in the philosophy behind the type of push you've used, such as suggesting that opponents are against improving and updating our schools, it has served the purpose of streamlining the execution of the campaign, where the board avoided pushback as long as possible. This is very practical politically in a controversial change like this. In that regard, it has been pretty effective. And once pushback materialized, you have waited for criticisms, gone and regrouped, and deftly countered them. And I know the deck should be stacked tonight with speakers who are in favor of the vote and the plan. This is also strategically very well-constructed. This shows strong organization, and it's to be commended. I understand that waiting on this vote will likely not change the outcome. And although I certainly disagree with portions of the plan, that's not my main concern. I want as many people as possible to know what is happening prior to you making a commitment that will impact the community in large ways for a considerable period of time into the future. Many feel that making this decision now shows a level of disconnect with the community that will likely continue to harm things in the longer run. My question becomes, what do you, as a board, have to lose by delaying your vote for 30 to 90 days and making sure that you're setting up meetings at all the elementary schools and/or other sites for interactive listening sessions to take place prior to the vote? It's not to inform your vote, though that may happen, so much as it is to continue to build relationships with the community, relationships that will serve the school district and community well in the years to come. A highly judicious use of your power now may also aid in reducing the exodus from our district. That act of faith and patience will speak volumes. I appreciate your attention, and thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Kronbaugh. Next, Dexter Merschbrock. Dexter?
Hello, welcome. Hello, it's Dexter. And I live at 2229 Meadowbrook Drive Southeast. I'm here today to talk about the facilities master plan, and I'd like to start by quoting back from you, John Lavery, from December 11th, when we first were presented the plan. And you said at the end of that meeting, quote, "We've just seen this for the first time presented like this in this detail." And so I'd just like to remind everybody that there's a lot of talk about how long this plan has been out there and how long we've all known the details, but the plan has only been available in its final form for scrutiny in the last six weeks. And a lot of that was over the holiday period, so maybe people have had a good 30 days to look at it. I'd also like to remind the board that you're all duly elected, and you're in a position to make huge decisions for our community, but your popular support is not very big. And that's evidenced by the fact that less than 5% of eligible voters often cast ballots in the school board elections that got you all where you are today. So with that in mind, I'd like to speak up for the petition that you've heard a little bit about and the process that we took to bring that before you today. So in the last 10 days, and it became clear to me and others that the board planned to move forward tonight with the vote, or at least it seemed to be clear, a small group of us went out and we decided to rise to your challenge to bring new voices to the debate. And so we knew we weren't going to change it from a yes to a no over the course of 10 days, and so we decided to ask, you know, for a reasonable thing, let us have a fair hearing, let the boards or the plan stand on its own merits or fail on its own merits. And so we did that by circulating petition, and specifically, our petition asked this, and I'm quoting from it here. Quote, "In order to have a more well-informed public discussion of the effects on all neighborhoods in the community, as well as allowing time for the local city governments to consider the proposal publicly, we request the vote on the facilities master plan be rescheduled for a date no less than 90 days after the January 22nd, 2018 Board of Education meeting." And that was it. It was a simple request to take an extra 90 days, which would put the plan out there for about 120 days instead of the 30 days, you know, sandwiched around the holiday period that people had before. And so I'm here tonight to tell you about some of the results, which you've already heard about, and they were stunning. And so, just so you know, we went out and met people where they were. We didn't ask them to come with us. And so you've heard where we went. We went outside of Jim's Foods, outside popular restaurants, outside the libraries here in town, down at the Newbo City Market, the Lyndale Mall someone went to. And we went to the doors of the people in the neighborhoods around some of these schools and in other neighborhoods. Specifically, we were around Grantwood, Kenwood, Madison, Van Buren, and Nixon. And so we talked to a lot of people, lots of different age ranges from 18 to over 80, people from different backgrounds and different professions. Someone told me that they talked to someone whose school-aged child had to translate for them because English wasn't their first language, and so we reached out in that way and got the stakes out, you know, to that person as well. And again, we didn't ask them to come with us, and then if they didn't show up, say they must not care. We went out to them, and a lot of people did care. And so we heard from people, they were concerned about changing small neighborhood schools to fewer larger schools that might not have a community feel. We heard that people, they said the decision was rushed, and despite the board's insistence, again, that everyone's had plenty of time to see on this, people still felt it was rushed. We heard people were concerned about who was on the committee? How did the committee get chosen? We heard about the impacts on neighborhoods, the historical values of our school buildings. But above all, from everybody, they were thankful for us. They cared about the issues, they wanted to know more, and they were grateful for a chance to speak up, if only in a tiny way. And so the results were stunning. In the end, in less than a week and a half, of about 10 concerned citizens working in our spare time, over 600 people signed this petition to ask you to delay the vote. And if you want to know what 600 looks like, this is what it looks like back there, the pages of the petition that we're presenting to you tonight. Of those 600 people, we talked to about maybe 10 people who were vocally in support of the plan, and two of those were immediate family members of the superintendent. For context, our 600 signatures would represent about 16.5% of the number of votes cast in the last school board election. And again, that was all done in 10 days. And so we also had 350 people sign a separate petition online that called for an outright rejection of the plan. All that added together, you have about 1,000 people. And so, you know, your course of action should be clear here tonight. In the long run, any vote to accept this plan that doesn't address the questions the community has will receive little public support and likely will be overturned in the future by a new school board. If you truly believe this plan is best for our children in the community, let it stand on its own merits. If it's a good plan, another 90 days for the public to learn more and weigh in will only strengthen it and allow it to move forward with the support of the community at large. Please listen to those who took the time to ask for more time. It's the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Lawrence Wankowski. Mr. Wankowski?
Hello, welcome.
Lawrence Wankowski, 4234 Railroad Northeast. First, I want to thank my fellow committee members for their participation in the different forums and that. And since I criticized the Gazette at the last meeting, I got to compliment them for stepping up and holding the forum downtown. It's all but fair. My comments here tonight are my own, not that of the committee. I am not angry, as some people might think. I am extremely sickened by sort of the community. The fact that people complain about the makeup of our committee and don't, or the committee, and they think that we had, you know, didn't understand that there was diverse issues and we weren't, that we were trying to segregate these new schools and that, that makes me sick. And that, you know, people come up with conspiracy theories, you know? I've been showing up to these board meetings 10 years at least, you know? Maybe not everyone, but a lot of them. It sickens me that all of a sudden, "Oh, we don't know what's going on in this community." Well, damn, I haven't seen most of these, anyone here in the last 10 years. Oh, wait, we only show up if it's important to us? You know, I think the committee should, or board should have something on there to say is where you're going for different community events and when, so people potentially can listen to what you have to say. But overall, you know, I was sort of disappointed in the last meeting of what I heard. The questions and answers were good. I thought there should have been more questions. You make this assumption, "Well, we know the answer, so we shouldn't ask the question." I expected a list of, a whole mess of, from basic questions to more extensive ones to, for people to answer. School board needs to learn some humility. You know, I heard a lot last meeting about, "Oh, how great we did this and that." And, you know, that's not what we're here for, is to get pats on their back. And if you're going to do, give your, sit there and give yourselves pats on their back, make sure you give yourselves... sure you give yourselves kicks in the lower back in public, and that it's all but fair. You know, and I also heard this whole thing, you know, bickering about where we should, whether we should take this to the public or not. And, you know, I gotta agree with what some of the people said, you know, it should be taken to all the schools. You cannot expect people to come to this building. If there is an anticipation of more people who are going to attend a board meeting than what fits in the boardroom, it should be taken to the public. When we did the issue at Washington, that probably should have gone to McKinley or Franklin, so people could have, which would have been a little more convenient to them. You know, when we're getting these big meetings, you can't, it's not fair to the community to show up. As for the comment about only 5% of the people voted for you, well, that's the community's fault. This is America. We have this right to vote. If you don't want to take advantage of it, don't bitch about it. Seriously. It's not that hard to call up and ask for an absentee ballot. Regarding your proposal of 802, I don't understand the purpose behind it since, for the most part, isn't that what we've been doing since, most of that what we've been doing since the school boards, or school district has been in existence? With the exception of the reviewing this for five years, which I actually should be, think should be three years, because in future school boards, I just don't have a lot of faith that they, you know, will do it less than five years, and that. You know, I could go on and on, but, you know, this is a better school district than this, than what we as a community are showing, and I'm just tired.
Excuse me, Mr. Wankowski, your time is up. Thank you.
Thanks, Lawrence, we appreciate your comments. Next, we have Mr. Anthony Arrington. Mr. Arrington?
Hello, welcome.
Hello, Anthony Arrington, a community member, 1311 34th Street Southeast. And sitting over there, I wasn't sure what I was gonna say tonight. I just wanted to come and listen. Couple thoughts. One, I, first of all, you guys have a hard job. You have a really, really hard job. You're getting abused tonight. Maybe you deserve it, I don't know. I'm not gonna pretend that I'm super educated on this topic and that I know every nuance of your plan. But I do know enough as a community member, and I do know how technology, and I know how future systems affect individuals' minds. And so while I would encourage that, what direction we go? From what I've heard tonight and what I've experienced, maybe it makes sense to hold off on the vote. I don't know the answer to that. But what I do know is you've got to host the community members who care deeply about your decision, and I don't know that another thirty, sixty, or ninety days would hurt you to hold off. Now, having said that, I'm a big believer in technology. Like I said, I'm a big believer in the need for new schools and, or revitalized schools. I'm also a big believer in keeping those schools as close to your communities as you can. And I want to give you an example of how it affected me personally, growing up, and how I know that, as I look back, I wish that I would have had opportunities in my own backyard. When I was about fifth grade, I got asked by Dr. Al Ruffalo to go to Expo. Didn't know what it was. Apparently, I was a smart kid growing up, I guess, I don't know. But I got asked to go to this expanded pupil program, and that took me out of Johnson Elementary School to Squaw Creek out on, by the lighthouse, that's now Titan TV or whatever it is. But I remember meeting a lot of new friends, a lot of new people. And what I remember most as I look back growing up is, every day after school, I met this kid named Brian, these kids of mine, they were rich to me. They lived over by East Post Road, these were rich people. But for whatever reason, they befriended me because I guess I was in their class. So I got to hang out with these kids, and every day after school, I would go to their neighborhoods and I would go, you know, my mom would let me take the bus to Brian's house, and they was living good. I mean, we could go do our homework, I'm like, I got a desk? I can like sit down and do homework at home? Like, I never did that before, but that's, you got a computer, you got the Apple computer in here? I never had all that stuff before. And that forced me to think, that forced me to want to try harder. I didn't want Brian to be a better student than me. I didn't want Brian to be better at anything better than me. And it always, I remember having to go home, when Brian's mom would take me home, or Rob's mom would take me home, I remember having to go back to my neighborhood. I remember sitting in my room at night with no desk, asking myself, man, shoot, I wish I could study like Brian, you know, I wish I had stuff like that, you know, here, I don't, why do I have to go out there? And my point is, that's, that's just in my little world, the use, the technology and the advances and the future opportunities made me mentally want to be a better person, made me mentally want to try harder, because I wanted that. I wanted a nice car, I wanted to live like Brian. I wanted my room like that, I wanted a desk in my room, and I knew I had to work. And it forced me and motivated me. And my point is that, I don't care if we build new school, let me say that, I do care. I think we gotta do something. If it were my preference, and I think I heard maybe the other, last night or a couple nights ago, that someone said that the, as you did your analysis, the cost of building a new school is about, or revitalizing old school is about seventy percent of the cost of building a new school. I don't know if that's been taken to the public, and we've made a decision to ask the public, well, do you want to pay another thirty percent to keep your same schools in the neighborhood? Because maybe those would. I believe that we ought to try to find a way not to close schools and upgrade them if the money's the same, I think someone out here said the money's the same. So if the money's the same, maybe we ought to make a decision about how we need to spend that money. And maybe spending that money keeping the schools in the neighborhoods is the right thing. I'm not saying that I know the answer, because I'm not the most versed person. But I know enough to know that if I had the amenities in Brian's house and in my neighborhood growing up, I'd probably be a far smarter person than I thought I was growing up. Because I wouldn't have had to travel somewhere into some other neighborhood to go get what I wanted and have the opportunities that I had. So for what it's worth, I hope that those things were taken into consideration. If that all possible, if there's a way to delay the vote, if that makes the most sense, it appears to me that maybe it does, maybe you do that. I'm not here angry at you, you got a hard job, I don't know, I don't know how you do it. So, but I know you have to do it. And I want to piggyback on what someone said back here, the gentleman who just spoke. He's absolutely right. And that's kind of why I got asked to show up here tonight, but I probably should be here more. We can bitch and moan all we want, but you're not voting? Shut up. And I tell my friends that all the time, and I've made a point to myself to continue to tell them that, get involved. I'm guilty of that, I'm trying to be better at that. And so I appreciate being here tonight, and again, you guys have got, you got a hard job, but it may make sense to hold off and think through that. Because I think you can be educated in your backyard just as well as you can in a brand new building elsewhere. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Arrington. Next, we have Phil Wasta. Mr. Wasta?
Hello, welcome.
Hi, good evening. Somebody forgot their cellphone. Twenty bucks.
We won't hold that against time.
Square up later. Phil Wasta, 3120 44th Street Northeast. I stand before you bringing five different perspectives. Lifelong citizen of Cedar Rapids, product of the Cedar Rapids Community School District, Erskine Franklin Washington, parent of two children who went through Cedar Rapids Community School District, Pierce Harden Kennedy, a concerned citizen and a volunteer member of the Facilities Master Plan Committee, which just rolls off the tongue. I did it because of all the free Halloween candy and bottled water. First of all, I'd like to thank you for proactively recognizing the need. I'd like to thank you for hiring a consultant and engaging a multifaceted committee. And I'd like to thank you for allowing the time needed to consider all options, because we took more time than you planned as a committee. We are proud of what we have brought forward. I'm aware and respectful of the public concerns. It is true, the Facility Master Plan Committee has had a lot more time to process all the information that's in the final study that was submitted to you. This is a difficult decision, and I appreciate the time that you all have invested to address the public's questions, because over the last several weeks, there's been, I know, a lot of different meetings. I attended several events to hear firsthand what the public is concerned about. I was at the Grantwood, the Gazette, and one other. Just because of, after putting in the kind of time that we have, I wanted to hear how other people receive it, were receiving it. And it culminated in this. At last week's Gazette Forum, one of the panelists mentioned the idea of, quote, "Gathering more information," end quote. You do not need any more information to make this decision. The information that people are seeking is that which will be gathered as you move forward through deeper community engagement. It is time to move forward intelligently and methodically. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wasta. Next is Molly Schlue, S-C-H-L-U-E.
Look, Schlue.
Schlue?
Yep.
Apologies on that.
That's okay, German names are hard.
Hi, welcome.
Hi there, I'm Molly Schlue, I live at 2207 Grand Avenue Southeast, and I have a couple of points I'd like to make. One of the big benefits of a walkable neighborhood school is being able to be at school for before and after-school activities. Kids who have to be bused to school and don't have someone in their family who can give them a ride during non-busing times miss out on the kind of enrichment activities that can be instrumental in shaping their lives. Here's one personal example. When my daughter was a student at Grantwood Elementary, I helped with the Grantwood Running Club. Running Club meets at school twice a week for six weeks in the fall and six weeks in the spring. It's open to everyone at school from preschoolers through fifth graders, and the attendance ranges from between sixty to seventy-five kids a session. It's not divided up by age, so the big kids help and mentor the little kids, which is really lovely and kind of hysterical. For about an hour, twice a week, the kids engage in serious physical activity, they learn to work toward a goal, and they get to be part of a group that they're proud of. I can't tell you, and this is true, this happened this morning at the Y, how many people come up to me when I'm wearing this shirt and say, oh, I was part of that, or my kid was in that, they love that. Grantwood Running Club and activities like it, and I'm just talking about this because it's the one I know, are important to a lot of kids and families. And it's not just formal activities like the Running Club. My family lived near our school, and I could see every day, on the weekends and in the summers, all the neighborhood kids who came to play at the Grantwood Playground, play on the equipment, the basketball court, the soccer field, spaces where they knew they were welcome and safe. Kids who have to be bused and who don't have parents or caregivers who can give them rides will be excluded from these sorts of activities and safe outdoor spaces. And often, those are the kids who need them the most. The board keeps talking about these new mega schools being community hubs, but for a kid who can't get there under their own power, that building isn't a part of their community. It's just a place they're bused to and from in a different part of town. My second point is this. As you've heard, there were, there were a group of people that went out and had the petition to ask you to please wait ninety days so people can hear more of it. And a friend of mine and I went and stood outside the Lad Library and then went to Laundromat on the southeast side by the Walmart. And this is, this is just a few anecdotes from this. We got about sixty-five signatures, and while I understand that that isn't any sort of scientific sampling, it was really interesting, and here are a couple of observations. First, we did speak to a significant cross-section of both, both in terms of age and ethnicity. Several of the adults we talked to were non-native speakers and needed a child or a spouse to interpret for us. When the issue was explained to them, all of these people signed the petition to ask you to please wait. About half the people we talked to, and this is just my friend Jane and I, said they had heard nothing about the potential closing of eight elementary schools in the core neighborhoods. Those people all signed the petition too. And then there were the people we spoke to who had heard about the facilities plan. These folks said they didn't feel they knew enough about it and were concerned and wanted to know more. They signed too. As a matter of fact, the only people who spoke with us that day but didn't sign were about a half dozen who identified themselves as teachers or district employees. All of those people said they had concerns about the facilities plans but didn't feel, as employees of the districts, that it would be wise for them to sign our petition. Not one person, not one, told us that they felt they knew enough about the plan, or that they were comfortable with this going to a vote without more information. You are making a decision of incredible magnitude that's going to affect everybody. Please respect the people of our city enough to give us the time and the information we need. Please hold your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Molly, we appreciate your comments. Next, we have Mr. Dietrich Doolin. Mr. Doolin?
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Dietrich Gail Doolin. I am, I live at 3624 Terrace Hill Drive Northeast. I am president of the Cedar Rapids NAACP, and I'm definitely glad to be here. But I'm also a product of the Cedar Rapids School District. I grew up through this school district. And I also have the luxury of being someone who's been challenging the school district since I was in school. So I didn't wait to get out of school to start challenging the district, so I've been doing this ever since I can remember from middle school. But I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak. I want to thank the committee for their effort, because I know that, you know, you gave up quality time and you believed in what you have done. And I also want to thank the committee, those of you that came out to the NSP meeting last week to speak to, at our request, to speak to some members of the community. We appreciate that. We're sorry we didn't give enough time to get all the questions answered. I must tell you, however, I have gotten more calls, I got more emails since that meeting, and more questions. The, you all brought up the issue of the achievement gap, that was not something either you had the time or the information to really address to how this was going to improve the achievement gap. Obviously, even for my constituents and for myself, that's an important issue, how is this going to improve the achievement gap? Because one of the things that already happens is the issue of transportation creates some problems. Finances create some problems for participating in programs, and if traveling further distance creates more problems, that doesn't help the situation. One of the concerns that I've been getting most of my calls and emails about, as recently as before I came to this meeting, was the issue of the lack of minority representation on the committee. Now, you all said at the meeting in the NSP office that there was representation, but I got some calls and some emails from some people who said they had been on the committee. I got some from some people who said they knew that it really wasn't, that initially there were some people that they dropped out. And it doesn't seem like there was really an effort to involve and bring more people in. One of my concerns about when you go out and you try to recruit people of color, ethnic groups, is not trying to get people just who are professional. You've got to get people who have an investment in the community, not because that's their job, because that's where they live. You know, no one, to my knowledge, asked NSP about helping getting somebody to be on that committee, and we would definitely help you. So next time you're looking for somebody to be representative, you can always ask us, because we can find you some people of color that will be on a committee and be active and participating. We want to encourage you to reach out to those folks that are not necessarily in a professional position, and I'm a professional, I don't have to be the person, but we need people that are committed to this community, who are dedicated, whose children and families live here, you know, who've been here for a while. Like I said, I've been here since, since I went to school, and so we need some people like that. Most importantly, though, is the education of our children. That's the number-one thing that we have to focus on, is the building's fine, but the education of the children is the most important thing, and we cannot let that go. We've got to remember that, and we have to have teachers, educators, people that work in the school, who are committed, who believe that all children can learn, and are committed to doing that. Not just because they get a paycheck, not just because they got a nice building, but because that's what they're committed to. So we want to really re-encourage you to make sure you look at that and be more inclusive when you look out to involve people in the committee. And if you, if you can't get some representation, again, if you don't call nobody else, you can call me. I can give you my number one out before you leave, well, you already know my number. But I want to encourage you to do that. Again, our children are important, and I just want you to remember, don't ever think that just because people are not here every meeting that they don't care. But we are trying to encourage, and I plan to be at more meetings, I haven't been at that many, but I plan to be here a little bit more often, and we want to encourage other folk to be here. One of my favorite sayings is, patience is a virtue. I want to encourage you to take the time and get it right, and get it right, take the time and get it right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Doolin. Next, we have Kathy Ulrich.
Thanks for this opportunity to address the board. My name is Kathy Ulrich. My address is 1436th Street Southeast here in Cedar Rapids. That would be a neighborhood that is south side of Mount Vernon Road, not that That would be a neighborhood that is south side of Mount Vernon Road, not that far from Erskine and Grantwood. I've listened to a lot of wonderful, sincere people tonight come and address the board with their concerns, and I think all of them are heartfelt and very well-intended, and certainly care about Cedar Rapids, care about their neighborhoods, care about students' theirs and everyone else's most of all. I'm a retired educator from this district. I worked here for 25 years, and I'm a native Cedar Rapidsian. And what I can say as an educator, I continue to be very connected to the school district and very connected politically in all phases of Cedar Rapids, as well as with the Iowa Legislature. And there are a lot of balls in the air. I would say that I also come to every board meeting, and Mr. Doolin is correct, there are many people that are here tonight that this may be their first board meeting. There are also people here tonight who come to every board meeting besides me. I know that this has been a large and arduous process and undertaking. I also know that politics is perception. And having said that, we've just gone through an historic election in 2016. I can't believe it's 2018 already, and we're getting ready and charging out again. I have door-knocked many, many doors over the years on many, many issues, and I can tell you that door-knocking is a wonderful experience if you've got the gut to do it. You learn an awful lot, and you also learn a lot from people about how they think and what they do know and what they don't know. And you can do some education for people and get them to follow your cause very persuasively, or not. It works both ways. I can also say that as a person who went and got a master's program, 20 years ago over at Cohen, their MAT program, I can tell you that many of the teachers that were in my cohort in those years taught in the College Community School District, and I was very envious. And one of the reasons I was very envious is that was a smaller district, and they were able to get more resources to get more technology. It was a joy to listen to, and many of us from here in Cedar Rapids, as teachers, were very jealous of that. I can tell you, 1998, I got my first computer on my desk at school and my first telephone, and that was a huge deal. And I taught in a building where, as a staff, we pulled cable in that building to get it up and running. I don't think they'd let us do that now, but we did it then. So what I would say, as we have these buildings, many of them are very old. They certainly do not, many of them live up to ADA standards, and they need to at a most basic level. As a special education teacher at the end of my career, the last 10 years, I know how important that is, to have facilities that not only are open to our students but are open to the public to be able to use them for a number of public reasons. I would also say that watching an election cycle where many people came forward and voted who have never voted before, and made their voices heard, and surprised many, many people here in the United States of America and on all levels politically, because they felt they were being ignored, real or imagined, and I don't know the answer to that. I suspect that if you postpone this vote tonight, there will be 30 to 90 days, however it might go, and you'll gather more information perhaps, and maybe that will change the outcome and maybe it won't. I would tell you with my 18 seconds left, I appreciate your service, everybody's service on the committee, and if you vote tonight, I'm hoping that you're going to vote for this facilities master plan. As I said, it's a framework, and I think a lot of the conversation we're hearing tonight is concerns that go beyond what the immediate vote should be tonight. I thank you for your time very much.
Thank you. We appreciate your comments. Next, we have Bridget Smith. Bridget? Hi, welcome.
Hello, I am Bridget Smith of 1221st Avenue Northeast. I am here on behalf of Women in STEM at CoCollege. I'm here today because we have been awarded a grant through the Society of Physics Experts to begin a mentorship program with middle school girls in the Cedar Rapids community. Studies show that by 7th grade, most girls who have shown interest in STEM fields tend to lose the desire to study these subjects. The goal of our group is to encourage girls at this impressionable age to continue pursuit of these STEM topics and offer the support along the way. Our group wants to offer tutoring and mentorship after-school hours for girls, as well as scientific demonstrations to all students designed to get them excited about these topics at least twice a month. We have more than 40 STEM students at CoCollege who have already committed their time to this program, because they want to make a difference in the young scientific community of Cedar Rapids. Our group has been attempting to get into contact by phone with the middle schools in this area since early December of last year. However, we were sent in circles, and our messages never received a response. We're at the point now where time is running out to use this grant money, and a fantastic opportunity for young girls in this community will slip through the cracks. I come to this board tonight to ask for your support in this program, as well as to say we realize we may need to complete forms or checks in regards to your policies to after-school programs, and we are more than happy and willing to do so if you just let us know what those are. We can be contacted through email at winstem@co.edu. That's W-I-N-S-T-E-M@co.edu. Thank you for your time, and please work with local middle school administrations to approve this initiative.
Thank you, Sarah. And I will tell you, from the board, we'll ask Dr. Buck and the administration to follow-up personally with you.
Thank you.
So, yep. Next, we have Sarah Hale. Sarah?
My name is Sarah Hale, and I live at 450 Liberty Drive Southeast. I come to tonight as a parent of a two-year-old and a four-year-old who will start kindergarten in the Cedar Rapids Schools next year, and we're thrilled to have our children in the Cedar Rapids School District and not a big-box district. Our children will be directly impacted by this plan. I'm also a lifelong educator. I also spent five years on a school board in a small district in Minnesota, and I have a PhD in education policy and leadership, so I've been really following this closely. I don't envy your position tonight. I think what you are facing is really the definition of a wicked problem without a clear-cut answer, and I think it's driven by a lack of funding. We've heard, as an aside, we've heard a lot of pleas to get involved on the local level here, and I would encourage everyone in the room to get involved at the state level as well for those who think that 1% allowable growth is adequate for our schools and for our children. Things that I've been thinking about as I consider this plan, I appreciate the district's attempt to go bold in education, especially where it's often difficult to be bold. I am encouraged by the idea to provide safe and healthy schools and environments for our children. I would encourage the district to also be bold with programming and to think about things like specials time for elementary school students as you move forward, with the possibilities for really improving those opportunities for our children and being bold with the programming that they are offered. I encourage people to think also that newer buildings aren't necessarily the end-all, be-all of education. New buildings get old and outdated, and I am concerned that we might be in the same position in 20 years when these new buildings reach that point. It's the instruction and programming that really make a difference in our schools. The third thing that I've really been thinking about is the significant environmental impacts of raising and reconstructing buildings in our city here. I think it's an important part of considering what is best for our students. In closing, I wish that I had a great answer for you all tonight. I wish that I had the perfect plan. I see some wonderful things in this plan, and I also see some things that trouble me. But as you make your decisions tonight, I encourage you to fully examine the many sides of the plan so that when you do vote, you feel confident that you have considered all the options and listened to all the voices in our wonderful, diverse district.
Thank you so much. We appreciate your comments. Lastly, we have Janelle McGovern. Hello, welcome.
Good evening. My name is Janelle McGovern. I live at 2207 Fox Trail Drive Northeast, and I would also like to say I was a member of the Facilities Master Plan Committee. I am also heavily involved in things like PTA and volunteering with the school in various programs that the schools my children attend, so I'm in and out of them quite a bit. And since the plan was presented, I sat back, and I didn't go to a lot of the events. I've watched them on television, I've listened, I have had many conversations with individuals. And I will tell you, the thing that drove me to participate in this is that I was angry. I wasn't angry when I was asked to join the committee. I was kind of like, "Thanks, glad you want to know what I think." But I was angry when I started visiting our schools, not just the ones I'm in routinely, that need new bathrooms and new water fountains and need secure entrances and need playground equipment. And I was angry when I saw children being educated in spaces that didn't fit the need. I saw a building where students were being taught science in a former kindergarten classroom that cannot possibly provide them with the environment that they need. I have heard teachers explain to me about how toilets exploded in the back of their classrooms. I have heard teachers tell me that the kids on this side of the room are wearing coats because it's cold, and the students on this side of the room are practically showing up in shorts because we have such a dramatic difference in a classroom. And through all of that, I just kept thinking, "How are we going to make it the same for all of the kids? How are the kids at Arthur and the kids at Nixon and the kids at Viola Gibson and the kids at all of these schools going to get an equitable education?" And while I recognize that a building change, whether it is a new building or a restoration of some kind, is not going to miraculously cause children to pay attention in math or allow teachers to have textbooks that they need or any of the other things that we have to, in my opinion, fight for every day for our children, it is going to solve the problem of exploding toilets. It is going to solve the problems that they have when they're dealing with facilities problems, whether it's leaking or shutters falling off of the wall, whatever these problems are, and there are many, and I have seen quite a few. It will deal with that part of the problem, and so I would encourage our school board to address that part of the problem and pass the facilities master plan recommendation. I would also like to thank you very much for giving me an opportunity to see all of this and to learn all of this and to spend the last year and a half doing it, to travel to different states even, to look at schools, so that I could see what was available, what was out there, so that we can provide the best that we can as a community. It is difficult for me, I mean, I will tell you, I called my husband and said, "So, Kansas City has utilities, right? We could look at those schools." They honor their history, they don't ignore it. They have brought a lot of that into these new buildings, and I think that that is important. But I also think that we can do better, and I would encourage all of you to vote in support of that. I would like to thank a lot of the people that I've heard tonight and also a lot of the people that I have harassed with this over the last year and a half, because my friends and total strangers at restaurants will tell you, "I will talk to anyone about this plan," because I think it's important. I would also like to say that I would love to see the passion that I have seen here tonight at regular PTA meetings. I would love to see you volunteering in the schools, reading to children who need additional help, helping with mathematics when they need additional support, supporting our teachers in the daily work of making our community better. I would love to see you there, and I know a lot of you are, and so I want to thank you, because I recognize what a sacrifice that is sometimes when you need to be in two places at once. And I would like to take a brief moment to publicly thank my husband for putting up with my frustration with this over the last year and a half, because it has been extensive and loud. Thank you, guys. Have a great evening.
Thank you. The board appreciates all of your comments, and as we move forward, we'll go into the next portion of our meeting, which is the consent agenda. At this time, I'll ask the board if there are any questions or comments about any items on the consent agenda. Gary?
John at President Laverty, at some point either before this, could we take just a short, couple-minute break?
Sure. Is the board agreeable to that? Can I take a five-minute break? Five-minute break, all right. So we'll go ahead and take a break and recess until 25 after.
Thank you.
Yep. All right. Resuming, we were on the consent agenda. Are there any items for questions or comments from the board that are on the consent agenda? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I make a motion that the board approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
And due to the personnel report, this is a roll-call vote?
Director Jansen.
Aye.
Director Jacobo.
Aye.
Director Meisterling.
Aye.
Director Borcherting.
Aye.
Director Humble.
Aye.
Director Anholz.
Aye.
President Laverty.
Aye, thank you very much. Moving on, we'll move into our administrative section, and it's, we'd like to welcome the Cedar Rapids Community Schools Foundation and Scott Drzumski, president of the foundation. Welcome.
Good evening, Superintendent Buck, Board President Laverty, and board members. I'm pretty sure why the media's here tonight. Checked it with Fox, and he said, "Yeah, top of the newscast." So I will take just a few minutes, but I do appreciate time out of a very busy board meeting tonight for me to share with you the story of the Community School Foundation here in Cedar Rapids. As you know, our goal is to help financially support and promote educational excellence in our schools, and we look to fund projects, programs, scholarships that enhance that experience for our students. Each year, the generosity of our supporters does things like fund field trips that enrich a student's learning, fill classroom cabinets with just the right supplies for a teacher, help teachers achieve new levels of proficiency via professional development grants, and provide gear for our student athletes or artists who grow through participation in sports, cheerleading, show choir, or any number of other extracurricular activities. As I begin to share with you about the foundation, I want to share, first of all, the state of the finances for the foundation is excellent. If we went back eight years ago to a predecessor who was the president of the foundation board, they'd be telling you that the assets were around $400,000 at the end of the fiscal year. I'm pleased to share with you that we ended the 2017 fiscal year, which ended in July, with nearly $1 million in assets. That's 150, thank you, yeah, 150% growth over that period of time. And even more excitingly, since we closed the books on our fiscal year 2017, we have surpassed that $1 million in assets that are sitting, growing, and serving our students every day of the year. While the markets certainly play a role in that growth, I also want to recognize others who are vital in this growth. First of all, and most importantly, our generous supporters, who provided funding in excess of $360,000 in the last fiscal year. The tenacious foundation board trustees, who have been a force in growing our organization. And I would be remiss if I didn't introduce and thank Karen Swanson, who's standing here with me, our foundation director. We don't do it without her, so thank you, Karen. On our trustees, I do want to point out that we had a couple of, several wonderful trustees retire from their service. One of them decided they wanted to be part of the school board, Jennifer, so we are excited for you and your next step, but we're also sorry to lose you. But I also wanted to recognize one of our other board members. Bob Reitz was a teacher in the Cedar Rapids District for a number of years. I don't know, Dr. Buck, did you have him?
I didn't have him.
Yeah, me either. He must have taught the smarter kids, I don't know. Oh, Karen did. Yeah, Karen did. But he left a legacy with 1,000... But he left a legacy with thousands of Jefferson students over his time at the school. But after retirement, he continued that legacy for the district as a member of the Foundation Board of Directors. It was his passion to grow the value, reach, and assets of the group. He formally retired from our board at the end of this year after 17 years in his role. But he was now going to serve as our first emeritus member on the board. And his first action as an emeritus member was to sign up for a working subcommittee. So I'm not quite sure he's actually left us yet. But to that end, we're pleased that there has been a scholarship that has been established at the foundation in his honor, and we're working to fully endow it so his legacy never goes away in our district. Speaking of scholarships, I had the opportunity to be part of the Jefferson Senior Night this year, 25 years after I went to my own senior night at Jefferson. And I got a chance to hand out a number of scholarships that are managed through the foundation. Forty-eight scholarships were handed out at our four high schools in this past spring to deserving students. We are also pleased to add six new scholarship funds to that program. We are privileged to be entrusted to protect funds and legacies provided by these scholarships and to work with the school counselors at each high school to make sure that award goes to just the right student. This year, those scholarships totaled more than $16,000. Another note about our 2017 seniors, they got to be part of an exciting event that the foundation started for the first time this year called our Senior Walk. So seniors returned to their elementary schools where they first started their career in the Cedar Rapids District. They donned their cap and gown, and students lined the hallways and gave high fives and cheers as they walked through. And we just thought, what a great opportunity to, first of all, go back to where you were at and full circle that before your graduation, but also for those young elementary students to see kids that started in the same classrooms they were in and the success that they were able to have as they're graduating and moving on to the next step. What a beautiful picture of that Cedar Rapids school experience from start to finish. From preschool or kindergarten roundup up to graduation day, we work as well to support the educational experience of our schools. In the last fiscal year, we served 783 teachers, 12,000 district students, and nearly $250,000 was distributed through different programs that enrich learning. 2018 is going to be a busy one for us as well. Of course, we're committed to continuing our support of students and teachers through our programs, and we can't wait to assist community members who ask our help to put their donations to use in supporting our schools in unique, meaningful, and lasting ways. We're proud of what we've done, but we know we can always do better. In the fall, we launched our new strategic planning process, and over the coming months, subcommittees will be working to create, pardon me, to create new ways to deepen our connection with the many who proudly call themselves alumni of our district, create new ways to support the fundraising efforts of our teachers and schools in their classrooms, to build name recognition and reach within our community and beyond, and to assure that the foundation is built upon a strong foundation for our local schools. I look forward to sharing updates at future board meetings about our progress on our strategic plan. Finally, I would be remiss if I did not mention one more thing and thank board members who are at this table for their support of our annual Lip Sync for Learning event. The competition continues to grow, as does the competition, which we duly note because you got to sit out in the audience with me for the finals again this year after making it last year. But most importantly, the reach and power of this event is huge. The event raised $17,000 in one night. Huge. And that's excellent for a second-year event, and we can't wait to see it grow. So I hope you're thinking about songs and costumes and will join us again next year for that. I do want to note that as we have said goodbye to Jennifer as a member of our group and allowed her to be a part of your group, that her legacy is also cemented as being a leader in making that program happen and building it up to what it is. So thank you, Jennifer, for that.
Thank you.
I do want to close with a thank you letter. We get a lot of these. This one's a really cool one because obviously a lot of work was put into this from the students at Madison Elementary School. And I won't read the whole letter to you. It talks about their trip to the state capitol and to Living History Farms. But I just wanted to share this with you. Thank you for the grant you awarded our class. Because of your generosity, we were able to travel to Des Moines for our best study trip ever. We had a wonderful day with our classmates and will treasure the memories we made that day. Thank you so much. That's why we do it, and that's why we appreciate those who give money to the foundation to make it happen. And I know it's why you do what you do and why we do what we do. So I did want to share that with you. And again, thank you to the school board for your support of the foundation. We look forward to working together in the upcoming year.
Thank you, Scott and Karen. Are there any questions or comments from the board at this time? I think all of us want to thank you and the board of the Cedar Rapids Community School District Foundation. We know how much effort that you put into this and all for the kids. So thank you again to both of you.
It's our pleasure. Thanks.
All right. Next, we'll move on to board governance. And in board governance tonight, we have the Facilities Master Plan. At this time, I would like to take a moment and actually read the resolution of the Facilities Master Plan that is before us before we have comments, questions, or anything of that sort. So the resolution that reads, whereas guided by a recommendation from the Facility Master Planning, FMP, Committee, and through informal feedback from the board and community throughout the process, a facilities framework is being proposed for consideration by the board. That framework includes the following: nine newly constructed four-section schools, Arthur, Cleveland, Coolidge, Erskine, Harrison, Hoover, Jackson, Pierce, and Wright, with the note that renovation considerations are being made for Harrison Elementary; one newly constructed three-section school at Johnson Elementary; three renovated four-section schools at Grant, Hiawatha, and Viola Gibson; eight elementary schools repurposed or phased out at Garfield, Grantwood, Kenwood, Madison, Nixon, Taylor, Truman, and Van Buren. The elementary facility master plan cost is estimated at $224,234,064 and will be funded through the proposed extension of the statewide penny option tax known as the Secure and Advanced Vision for Education Save Fund. It may also include funding related to the physical plan and equipment levy, PEPOL. If passed, funds will be available for use to implement the plan starting in July of 2020. The Facility Master Plan Committee has proposed a tiered approach to the work as a recognition that due to the length of the implementation plan, it will be necessary to intermittently review the existing conditions related to facilities and adjust or pause plans accordingly. The Tier One includes Arthur, Coolidge, and Jackson schools. It is also the case that the board will expect reports from the superintendent approximately three times each year on progress being made regarding the implementation of the framework. The board desires that this continue to be a collaborative process. As such, it is expected that for each school, there will be a process in place that engages the community with a focus on those most impacted by each school and providing feedback on the future of the facility. The board will work with the City of Cedar Rapids to develop a Memorandum of Understanding, an MOU, to formalize that collaboration which will occur between the entities through the Facilities Master Plan implementation process. This will be an expectation for newly constructed schools, renovated schools, and schools that are being repurposed or closed. More specifically, the community engagement conversations are scheduled to begin on this approximate timeline. At Coolidge Elementary, it would begin on January 2019. Jackson Elementary, January 2020. And Truman, January 2021. Pre-planning of the framework implementation will begin prior to and in preparation for the community engagement conversations. Upon completion of Coolidge, Jackson, and the repurposing of Truman, the board would review the next steps in the process guided by the approximate tiers recommended by the Facility Master Planning Committee, as well as proposed Board Procedure 802A, which we just approved, related to facility planning, and determine if a pause or adjustments to the plan should be considered. So that's the resolution as proposed tonight in front of the board. Are there items that the board would like to discuss related to this proposal and resolution? Questions for administration? Jennifer?
I would like to note that last, at our last board meeting, I had asked Steve Graham if the facilities proposed were ADA compliant or if they were designed with ADA functional accessibility. And Steve was able to contact our architect on record, Shive Hattery, and confirm that they are functionally accessible, not merely compliant.
Very good. Thank you. Other questions or comments? Gary?
Thank you. A list of a few points that I've jotted down just to make sure that, I'll try to keep them brief. But as we moved into this process, there were some, four concerns I think that I had as we moved forward. One, I said I would not vote for a plan that did not have a funding source in it, in particular looking at SAVE. And the resolution we see tonight does so. I said that these, as we rebuild or build, that these are community buildings, they belong to the community, and there should be widespread community input to the plan. And as I looked through this, we've, we have indicated that that's what we would desire. Twenty-first century buildings, that we build new facilities that would better meet the needs of students in the 21st century. I also see that within our resolution, at least the intent. And flexibility, that this is a long-term plan, that we would have flexibility in it because who knows what will happen in five years or 10 years. And again, we're going to go back and it's built in to review as we move along to those. I want to expand a little bit about the community input because I do believe, as I've heard tonight, that, and I do believe these are community buildings. They don't belong to the district. They belong to the Cedar Rapids community. Whether you have a child in a school or will have a child in the school, whether you had a child in a school or will never have a child in the school, you still, the buildings belong to you because it's going to be funded through public dollars. These are public schools. So I think it's important that all of the community has input into the spaces that we build or that we repurpose. Back in, I believe it was 2013, we went through a process, reimagine, relearn, it was, or redesign. It was a project that was spearheaded by Dr. Pickering. And it, we had community conversations. We had variety of meetings in different public structures where community members sat in small groups of four or five and had a discussion about what they thought education should look like in Cedar Rapids as we move forward. The groups, the format would be that you spend 15, 20 minutes in that group, exchanging ideas, writing them down on paper that was at the tables, and then you disperse to a new group and either expanded on that conversation you just had or went in a new direction. But it was, it was a way of getting thoughts and ideas from a large group together. The ideas were gathered and were published. Anyway, the long and short of it was, we moved into looking at the direction of creating or expanding magnet schools. And also, from that process, we had the Iowa BIG program that was developed. And it was, as I look back at that, at those conversations and where we are, it seems that the community is readily supporting those projects. The magnet schools, we continue to look at ways of expanding and supporting. And the Iowa BIG program has received local community support and has been highlighted both state and nationally. I would hope that as we move forward, that we develop similar processes in those community conversations, that we allow the community to have those conversations of what they think the schools should look like and what, if we need to repurpose areas or schools, facilities, what those buildings or that facility or that land would also look like. I believe the resolution has that opportunity to do that, you know, a big level, a big in all of it, in this day and age's trust. We can, we can put it down in paper and so on, but it's, trust is developed not through words and talking, but through action. And so we need to, as we move forward, to continue to build that trust, not just by words, but by actions as we move forward. And so it behooves us as a board and individuals to do that through trust. And I absolutely employ that all, not only the people that are sitting here tonight, but those people that sign petitions, those people that are sitting back in the neighborhoods, you continue to stay involved, you come to any meetings, you email us, you contact us. I think the best way. What I've really been encouraged by in some of the processes is that we've had face-to-face conversations and people are putting down their smart devices, and they're coming together, and there's something to be said about a face-to-face conversation and dialogue. And maybe I'm just old school, and I know we're talking about millennials, but, you know, it's looking into someone's eyes and it's listening and feeling and having that ability to strengthen and converse an idea that really, I think, helps to strengthen the conversation. So that's, that's my thinking. I believe that regardless of what we do and if we, if it happens today, tomorrow, whatever, I still believe that we need to have those community conversations. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. We appreciate your comments as well. Others? Kristin, you have comments?
Yeah, I do. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna read so that I make sure I get my points across because I don't like to do a lot of public speaking. So as a volunteer board, our fundamental role is to represent the community's interests by monitoring the work of the superintendent. I believe the best strategy any leader has is to hire good people and give them the authority and the tools they need to do their jobs. This district is fortunate to have not only an excellent leader in Dr. Buck, but an extraordinary staff of professional educators, administrators, and facilities managers. As a mother, I have had the privilege to know and befriend scores of teachers, coaches, and staff members who have all worked tirelessly to educate and nurture my sons. I want them to have the tools they need to do that for every child in this district in the decades to come. As a community, we have to face three simple truths. One, our facilities across the district are deteriorating faster than we have the funds to maintain them. Two, our sources of income are shrinking. And three, families are acting out of our district at an alarming rate. These interrelated problems have ominous, long-term implications. While problems are simple to articulate, comprehensive solutions are rarely easy. They are full of complexities and competing interests and impact thousands of people. I know some elements of this plan raise concerns for people. I see it. I understand it. I hear you. Each of us up here is part of your community too, and as your neighbors, we respect the validity of your perspectives. We also need to listen to the professionals and the community members who are advocating for a solution to the broader challenges we are all facing. I've heard teachers, principals, engineers, financial experts, and other parents like me urging us to move forward. While it may be more, might be more comfortable, it would be irresponsible for us to kick the can down the road. I see too much of that in government, and I'm not interested. I see too much of that in government and I'm not interested in playing a part of that. I want to reiterate that approving this plan still allows for adaptation within its outline, but I accept the conclusion of the district staff, the consultants and the greater-than-year-long work of the planning committee, that we need to act and do something.
Thank you, Kristin. We appreciate your comments. Other comments?
I have a comment.
Nancy?
And I have mine written down also. And to let folks know, I have great pride in being a school board member and I'm committed to doing the best for our students. And I have spent an enormous amount of time reading emails, listening and attending some of the forums. I want the community to know that I have been listening and I care about the future of our students, staff and community. The decision before us is tough. However, we cannot ignore the fact that our elementary schools are decaying. If we don't do something now, the situation will only get worse. Once again, my concern is for the safety of our staff, students and community. I am supportive of Dr. Buck, the Facilities Masters Planning Committee, the district staff and community members that were involved in this year-long process, as well as recommendations to the board. The time is now to do something.
Thank you, Nancy. We appreciate your comments. Others? Comments? Questions? Mary?
You know, I just want to say that all seven of us up here have studied this issue for many years, not just the last year and a half. We've kicked the can down the road a little bit. Five years ago, when we put Monroe out of the school business and Polk, and we repurposed Polk. So we listened to everyone, we've talked to many people, we've have countless emails, countless conversations. There is a strong support in the community to move this plan forward. And because in the plan, we have opportunities to continue to revisit as the population changes or boundaries change or whatever the case may be. And we are committed to involving the community in those conversations and what that school in that neighborhood is going to look like. So please know that we're going to be continually engaged, we're going to continually ask the right questions, gather the right people together and make sure this plan is successful for all of our students.
Thank you, Mary. We appreciate your comments. Others? Raphael?
Yeah, so throughout this process, you know, I don't want to say the same thing that everyone else has said, but you know, I feel we've all had opportunities to listen, whether it was individually, one-on-one or attending more recently, some of the sessions. Those perspectives matter, they're important. And when I think about this, you know, it's almost like, and it's interesting that in Cedar Rapids, we have a river that kind of divides the city. And I was kind of trying to, in my mind, picture in the past or in some historical, you know, context, what, and it's interesting that the SAVE fund, you know, means advanced vision. What advanced vision did others have before us to put us where we are today? And I kind of liken this process to, okay, we get to a river, we're trying to start something. Everybody comes together and everybody can decide, you know, hey, you shouldn't build this over there, you shouldn't build that, maybe we shouldn't cross the river, maybe we should go north, south, whatever direction it is. But ultimately, someone has to have the vision to decide, well, don't we need a bridge first to cross that river? And I almost feel like this process was kind of that bridge. It bridged for all of us, the information maybe that we didn't have. It was community members, it was the consultants, it was parents, it was staff that took this information, digested it. And from the beginning, there was no, you know, preconceived idea or notion. It was something that was organically put together, something that people came to the realization that something has to happen. And it falls to us to decide what that is. But having read through the framework, having considered it, thought about it, you know, it is something that I see as that process moving to get that bridge in place, to get us to where we need to go.
Thank you, Raphael. We appreciate your comments as well. Additional comments or questions? Jennifer?
So I would like to point out that I am very appreciative of the timeline of the proposed resolution as it will allow us to approach changes in a thoughtful, proactive way, instead of being in an emergency situation where we're being very reactive. I think it's been well thought out and that having pause in place for us to see if we're reaching our goals or course correct as needed is very thoughtful and I do appreciate that.
Thank you. Gary, you have some more thoughts or comments?
Just one thing that I forgot to say, and that's a big thank you to the committee, the Facility Master Committee, that they did what we asked them to do. And they came back with, I was a bit surprised, with a very bold concept, but they, they did what we asked. We were looking for not only a look at our facilities and where we are, but also to be able to put together a plan of how do we, how do we move forward and also funding. So again, it was a volunteer, I mean, they weren't paid, they were, contributed hours and hours and hours of work and vested, and they're doing it because of their commitment to the community. And so I just wanted to express the thank you for their somewhat thankless job of what they, what they've done. But they did a very admirable job and we appreciate that.
Other questions or comments?
I want to bring up one item that came up when we were at, we were at Kenwood Elementary, Dr. Buck and I and a few others. Jennifer, you were at Kenwood. And it's one of our great magnet schools, it's doing gangbusters. And one of the parents who enrolls into Kenwood asked, they have a really young child that, you know, may want to go into the magnet program and asked about legacy students and being able to go into magnet schools. And I thought, maybe I would let Dr. Buck kind of answer that. I mean, what are the opportunities for us to allow legacies of children that are already in some of our magnet programs that are experiencing the great things there to do that in the future?
Yeah, so I'm glad to see Val here so I can get validation, she can nod along and do, to make sure I'm doing it right. But we already, we already offer legacy opportunities. So if we have families that have made it into the lottery, we honor those families going forward. And so what I, I wouldn't see is that we would have any reason to change that, that policy or practice going forward. So it's one that's already in place and is serving us well, so.
Val's shaking her head, yes? Awesome. Thank you. All right. And any other questions? Jennifer?
I do have one final comment, and that is that I have heard a lot of feedback about things like green space and some other items. And I've very carefully taken notes and also studied those items. That will fall into more of a programming perspective, but it is being heard.
Any other comments or questions?
I do have something that I would like to read and I did take some time to put this together, my thoughts. And so this Facilities Master Plan conversation began really in about 2008 after the flood, when the school board acknowledged, it was my first year on the board actually, acknowledged that there were students leaving the district in greater numbers and were moving in. During this process, we've been asked a lot, why is that happening? About two years later, we started to experience what has become an eight-year trend of the underfunding of public education in the state of Iowa. We had a speaker very eloquently talk about that fact, and I would encourage every one of us in this room to take the time and let our legislators, not just the local legislators, but all of our legislators in the governor's office, know in Iowa that we value public education, AK through higher education. It all makes a difference and it's unacceptable, the levels that we're receiving from the state of Iowa. Our children are hurting and the future of our state are hurting. So then in 2012, after concerns were raised about ADA compliance in our school buildings, we commissioned the local engineering and architecture firm, Shive Hattery, to do a comprehensive evaluation of all of our schools. In 2013, as Garry Ann Halt mentioned, they came back with a report showing that only three of our 21 elementary schools would cost less to remodel than to replace. And the majority had significant challenges to bring them beyond minimum ADA requirements to modern learning environments which would benefit our students, staff and others in our community. And therefore, in our role as a board in leading the school district with one employee, Dr. Buck as our superintendent, we, the board asked Dr. Buck and the district administration to develop a new strategic vision for the district, which we evaluate him on every year. It includes five key elements, and these are critical to this district right now. We've not done a very good job of telling our story, all the amazing things. Some of you had mentioned it, the Iowa BIG program, the magnet programs, the amazing teachers that work day in and day out, the volunteers that sit outside of classrooms in our elementary buildings and the hallways, one-on-one with kids, those that work with children in poverty and homeless, we have hundreds of them in our district. We need to do a better story of telling what this district is doing that's pretty amazing. All of us have chosen at this table to have our kids in this district. Developing the best workforce possible, which will meet the needs of students we serve. Those students, as you've heard, over half of them are on free and reduced lunch. Many of them are from other countries, not speaking English as their native language. We have thousands of students that have special needs through physical or mental disabilities, hardships at home, hunger, all kinds of different things. We need to support learning in ways that will ensure that every learner is future-ready, not just some that are ready to take the challenge because mom and dad pushed them to do an AP class, and not just some who have money to take private lessons in the summer to learn a musical instrument before they get into middle school, but every student, whether they go into four-year college, two-year training, the trades with our local unions or into the military service or whatever they choose. Our students need to be future-ready and that happens in the classroom with the staff as we hire and prepare them to work with our students. We need to develop, as Mr. Doolan has said, to develop an intercultural mindset amongst the district staff. We haven't done good enough in this area and this board recognizes that. This is my 11th year on the board and every year we try and make this happen and I'm proud of what this board, along with Dr. Buck and his administration have done to try and help us understand and our staff understand what it means to be interculturally competent, to understand where others are coming from in their day-to-day lives and work together. And that's, and that's that part of this. Our population is diverse and it's diversifying further every day. We also agreed that we need to engage in the conversation that we've had over the last 18 months about school facilities that meet the needs of the 21st century education we've all talked about, ensuring that they meet the needs of all students, but also support engagement with our community. We've heard that loud and clear. From this new district's strategic plan, the board charged Dr. Buck a year and a half ago with creating a Facilities Master Plan Committee to be made up of a variety of citizens from across the community and within our schools. There were no expectations of the outcome. However, we wanted whatever came out of the process to recognize the strategic plan's focus of all students, future-ready, to be able to show that it will save money, that we can reinvest in efforts closer to students in their classrooms and minimize any increases to the local property taxes by using funds from the SAVE penny sales tax extension, if at all possible. The Facilities Master Plan, as presented to the board, is a culmination of that process. Although it is not perfect, and I know it's not what some of you in the audience tonight wished would happen, these are very difficult decisions, we've taken them very seriously and personally. These will create change in our community and we understand this will be more difficult for some than others. It is my belief that we have no choice but to move forward with the framework in front of us. As a board, I believe we have done more than our due diligence to make this a transparent process and to listen to as wide of a swath from our community as is reasonably possible. That's not from arrogance, that's from the work that we've done as a board and as a district and as a community over the last many years. We have listened and based on feedback, added pauses in the process. Yes, we have listened. What you have told us is part of the resolution that we will be voting on tonight, that will go into public record for future citizens to read. The framework, as it's called, of our plan will guide us, but allow for monitoring and adjusting to unanticipated changes in our community. These changes might include population or enrollment changes, local economy or employment changes and legislative changes impacting public schools. The list goes on and on. This will happen over the next 15-year span of this plan. We are also working to implement a memorandum of understanding, the MOU, with the city of Cedar Rapids to formalize the collaboration our two government entities will have during the visioning and implementation for each of the 21 current elementary school neighborhoods. We've listened, we've been asked to do this. There, again, are trust issues on many different sides of this. Many trust us, others where schools are closed and other issues, you don't trust us. People on the city have questions, there's no doubt about that. This will legally formalize that relationship moving forward. And attorneys on both sides, on the district side and on the city side, are currently working on that memorandum of understanding, which will come forward before the board and the city council in the near future. Lastly, I want to thank the Facilities Committee members, to Dr. Buck and to Steve Graham and others of the district staff who have spent many evenings, many hours over the last 18 months considering so much data, options, and to come to the point we're at tonight considering this plan. And to the stakeholders in the Cedar Rapids Community School District, hundreds of you who have shared your thoughts, concerns, ideas and opportunities this plan presents, whether it be in person, I've met with many, many of you and talked many times face-to-face as have others, emails, text messages, phone calls, all of the above. And finally, to my fellow board members who as elected volunteers on this board have each spent many, many hours engaging with stakeholders, reading reams of reports and data, asking questions, doing your own research, asking more questions and spending time in so many meetings considering this plan, I want to thank all of you personally. So with that, I would like to ask if there's a motion to approve BA 18238.1-2, the resolution before us for the Facility Master Plan as printed in our agenda.
I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
This will be a roll call vote.
Director Humbles?
Aye.
Director Portchrdine?
Aye.
Director Meisterlein?
Aye.
Director Jacobo?
Aye.
Director Jansen?
Aye.
Director Ann Halt?
Aye.
President Laberty?
Aye. I want to thank you all for your work again on this. And again, for the community, I want to assure you that as this motion passes and this resolution moves forward, we do intend to adhere to the language and the spirit of that resolution and to the legal ramifications that will happen between the city and the school district in the memorandum of understanding that is underway. So with that, I would like to adjourn this meeting. Thank you so much for being here.